I'll order the meeting of the October 16th Frederick County Planning Commission. This time, I want to make a brief announcement before we have a moment of silence. We, as you can see, have a very large crowd here tonight. Our capacity in the room is getting close to that for the Fire Marshal. We do encourage anyone that doesn't have a seat. We do have facilities in the hall. I believe there's TVs and monitors out there that you can watch these proceedings there if you feel uncomfortable or you feel that it's just overcrowded. So, but when we hit the certain mark, they're keeping an eye on the amount of people in the room. We're allowed 260, and we're somewhere around 230 or 40 right now. So, just a brief announcement that we'll keep an eye on that, but until then, we're okay. But if you feel uncomfortable, we have a place in the hallway that you can watch the proceedings. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone to observe a moment of silence, please. Thank you. First item on tonight is our adoption of the agenda. There's no changes to the agenda. I'm a motion.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is adoption of the approval of the minutes from our September 4th, 2019. Is there any changes to the minutes as they were presented?
Blue for approval.
Second. Got a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is our committee reports. And unless someone is slipping one by me, I don't know if we have a committee report tonight for many of our commissioners. Mr. Unger, you don't have one tonight, do you?
Just for sanitation, we moved our meeting, but so Mark knows, we've got about 18 and 3/8s over here today.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Seeing no one else, I'll go to our Winchester Planning Liaison, Mr. Tegnesi.
Thank you. We had a very short meeting. We're in the process of reviewing our comprehensive plan, and we covered chapters, bombing goals and objectives and economic sustainability. And we had a very short meeting and not very many people.
They happen sometimes. Our next item is our Board of Supervisor Liaison, Ms. Trout.
Good evening. Board of Supervisors met on Wednesday, October 9th at 7:00 PM. We did select a name for the new ball field complex. It will be called Stonewall Park. We also had an amendment to our fiscal year budget for this year to transfer $4,504,520 as supplemental appropriation to our, from our county capital fund to our new fund for, essentially for capital improvements. And then we had discussions about landscaping buffers, screening and off-street parking and telecommunications facilities, but we didn't take any votes on those. That concludes my report.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item on our agenda is our citizen comment portion. We reserve this for anyone that'd like to come forward, speak to the commission on any items that is not on the agenda tonight. Anyone would like to come forward, this is their time to do so. And seeing no one, I'll close the citizen comment portion, which moves us right along into our first public hearing item, which is a rezoning number 3-19 for Berlin Steel and Mr. Dennis Riddings and Ms. Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This is an application to rezone two parcels of land that total a little over 15 acres from the RA, Rural Areas District, to the M1 Light Industrial District with proffers. Now, the subject properties are located on the eastern side of Riddings Lane, which intersects with Route 277. I can direct you to the screen on your left. For reference, you have Fairfax Pike, Route 277, Riddings Lane, and then this piece in blue is the existing Berlin Steel facility. They're seeking to rezone those two areas in yellow in this location and this location. Now, the site is located within the limits of the Southern Frederick Land Use Plan of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. The plan depicts the subject properties with an industrial land use designation. So, the proposed M1 zoning that is being sought tonight is generally consistent with the land use plan as it relates to this area. I would note that these properties, though, are not within the limits of the sewer water service area. And the Comprehensive Plan does state that it is expected that land uses within the UDA and the SWASA be served by public water and sewer and that new rezonings be within the sewer water service area. However, the site is contiguous to existing M1 zone property, and it's intended to facilitate the expansion of an existing business, which is the Berlin Steel site. This request to rezone the properties outside of the sewer water service area may be appropriate. Now, staff outlined two concerns in the report that's before you tonight. First is the Comprehensive Plan does show a new minor collector roadway planned through the site. I would note that this is a planned roadway. It is not designed at this time, and the location, as with any comprehensively planned road, is subject to future modifications or changes. So, just wanted to point that out real quick on the long-range land use plan map. Again, 277, Riddings Lane, and that new collector that runs pretty much right through the center of the two properties proposed to be rezoned. Another concern in the VDOT comment that's part of your agenda, they stated that the turn lane analysis submitted indicated that there is a need for a turn lane in the future, and I would note that this has not been addressed in the rezoning. So, the applicant has proffered two things with their application. First, they have put a restriction that the land use improvements will expressly be used for a metal fabrication business, and this is consistent with the proffers associated with the existing M1 zone property, which is also limited to metal fabrication, which is the use of the Berlin Steel. And they've also proffered a monetary contribution of $1,000 for fire and rescue. So, with that following the public hearing, staff is seeking a recommendation from the commission to forward to the board. I would be glad to answer any questions, and Mr. John Lewis is here on behalf of the application.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Any questions for staff? Thank you, ma'am. Applicant or representative, would the applicant or representative like to come forward, please? Here he is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm John Lewis with Painter Lewis. I'm here to represent the project. The only thing I'm going to address is the turn lane requirement. We decided not to proffer that for the reason that the entrance is working very well right now. We are not aware of any traffic problems out there, no history of traffic accidents, no backups, et cetera. And what Berlin Steel is proposing to do is just expand their lay-down yard, at least at this point. Not, we're not, we don't anticipate any increase, significant increase in traffic from the plant, maybe a truck or two a day, hopefully, so they can make some more money. But the fact of the matter is, we have to come back in with a site plan if this rezoning is approved. And at that point, I think that transportation and VDOT can have another bite at this apple. And I would hope that that would be sufficient. The warrants for the left turn lane are based on existing traffic on 277. Really doesn't have anything to do with Berlin Steel or the amount of traffic that goes in and out. It's based on the amount of traffic that's advancing and opposing on 277 itself. Now, that, that number is, might be a good number, it might be high, it might be low. We didn't feel it would, it should be incumbent on Berlin Steel to just go ahead and proffer to do this turn lane if we don't absolutely know for certain that it's required. And like I said before, since the intersection, or in this case, the driveway, is functioning very well, we didn't see a point in pursuing that. I'm glad to answer any other questions.
Any questions for the applicant? I see one down there. Mr. Unger.
John, where's that future road going and coming from? That they run a...
It doesn't touch this property. It goes south of the property.
Mr. Thomas.
Mr. Lewis, if VDOT came back and said you have to put a left turn lane, what would the owner's response be?
Well, they'd have to cough up the $400,000 and put it in. They'd have to, they, you can't get site plan approval if VDOT's not going to approve what's going on there. And I think county transportation's probably in the same boat.
Any other questions? I got one, Dennis.
Yes, Mr. Lewis. What you're saying is, you don't have enough information to make a decision on whether a left turn lane is required or not, so you're taking the obvious advantage to you in saying we're not going to put one in. But with any fluctuation in traffic, it's going to become a problem that's going to become the problem of Frederick County and the state of Virginia to correct. Wouldn't it be more considerate, go ahead and consider this now prior to approval and wait to see if it becomes a problem later?
It'll, it'll become a problem at some point. If the traffic continues to increase on 277, it might be next year, it might be in 10 years, it might be in 20 years.
So, why not address it now?
Pardon me?
Why not address it now? Why put it off on somebody else?
If, we're not actually putting it off on somebody else, we just don't want to build it if it's not warranted. And unless we had a specific warrant study done that shows that that traffic out there, I think it's estimated to be 8,500 trips per day with peak flows of around 500 cars each way. I mean, if that, if that was occurring out there, I think we'd be having a problem. I don't think the trucks, you know, the traffic could get in and out of the site, and that's just not occurring. So, I don't want to offer anything that my client has to pay for, but I would, I would advise my client to do an actual traffic study before they put in the turn lane. And that could be a condition of a site plan. Or you could make me put it in a proffer. You know, it's kind of up to you guys.
Any other questions? John, I've got one here. Mr. Oats?
Back to Mr. Unger's question about the road that goes through the property, the planned road. I don't think he's referring to the parkway south of it, the connector road that goes through these two properties that Candace pointed out in the presentation.
Yeah, I came in late. I didn't see that.
I thought it was going through that property, but I...
So, Frederick Parkway down here. Up to the... Turn to this one.
Well, it's going right through the building, isn't it?
I don't believe it is.
Side of the building, well, that's their lay-down yard. Yeah, that's going to be a problem.
That's why I asked you, where's the road going anyway?
I thought you were referring to that, referring to the southern connector road that's planned.
No, he was referring to the connector road that Candace pointed out. That doesn't go through the building, it goes east of it.
If you go back to the drawing, it would, they showed the road, it would be a lot easier to understand.
Which way do we go? Well, I assume this is kind of a cartoon, so you could probably put it through, I don't know, Dennis, does it go through your house? You could probably put it through that. I mean, you could find a way to get the road through the Berlin Steel property without impacting the building. Now, as you're aware, what we're rezoning is that area to the, to the right below it, which presumably they're going to make a lay-down yard. So, it's going to disrupt their operations quite significantly to put this road through there.
Well, the roads in the Comprehensive Plan understand that they don't go exactly where they're at on the map a lot of times, and it's, for me, it's incumbent upon you to find a solution to get it through the property or around it, and not for us to have to figure out how to condemn it off of someone else later. Mr. Furse, you've seen this road cutting through there?
Yeah, I thought you were referring to the red dashed line down at the bottom, which is Minor Arterio, New Minor Arterio Road. So, no, I wasn't aware of that.
And as far as the entrance proffer, I think I'd be comfortable if it was just a proffer that said, "You will install the entrance or the turn lane if warranted by VDOT." Just so there's some assurance, because if a site plan ends up not being required or not brought forward, and it's just going to be used as a lay-down yard.
I don't have any problem with that language.
Yeah, we're not looking for you to do it whether it's needed or not, but only if it is needed.
All right.
Mr. Thomas?
I know that connector road, proposed connector road is in the Comprehensive Plan, but we've already, where it's located, we've already set the county up for condemnation activity, because I'm sure Berlin Steel's not going to give access through that property right next to the building anyhow. And I think, you know, between Mr. Lewis and the planning department, they ought to look at maybe bringing it down at a location that doesn't run right next to the building and relocating it to somewhere where it would be more appropriate for both the county and for the owner of the property. Because I, you know, if I was that business owner and owned that building, there's no way you're coming with a connector road through there without condemning it, and we're not going to, probably not going to do that anyhow. So, I think we ought to look at a more appropriate location to put that connector road.
I couldn't agree with you more. Mr. Riddings has been there forever. I don't know when that was drawn in there, but it shouldn't have destroyed his business because, you know, they didn't want to take a road that way.
Yeah, if I'm with an alternative route, we need to see an alternative, or otherwise, this doesn't meet the Comprehensive Plan.
Good comments. So, your recommendation is?
I'm not going to make a recommendation on my district.
All right. We, if we postponed this to allow the, Mr. Lewis to come back with a recommendation and to relocate the connector road, working with the county planning staff, would that be more appropriate?
I'd support that.
Okay, I recommend we delay this or postpone it for 60 days?
Yes. Appropriate after the public hearing? Thank you. The one, the one question I have, or, Mr. Lewis, was you going to submit a site plan now, or you just wanted a rezoning, you're really not going to submit a site plan at this time?
No.
Because they're just, no structure, no change, really, they're just going to do a lay-down area, and that was it? Okay.
They'll have to do a site plan for that also, but we're not working on one.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing item, and at this time, I'll open a public hearing. Anyone that'd like to come forward, to speak, come to the podium, state your magistrate district and your name, and the floor is yours. It's open for the public hearing. Yes, sir?
Hello, I'm Dennis Riddings. I'm the property owner, and it's based on a sale to Berlin. And I think that the original plan that's shown there, coming through the property, but a later plan shows it coming over to Prentice Lane, which is to the east of there. So, I think the problem you're looking at has already been thought about and dealt with, so...
Okay. Any, any questions? Okay, thanks, sir. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Any discussion?
Later plan? Is there a later plan that we're not aware of?
First site plan?
Yeah, no complaint. Just discussed.
Location of that road. We only got what we got in front of us.
Okay.
So, Pecking District?
So, if there's no discussion, no additional discussion, I move that we delay rezoning application 03-19 for 60 days to allow the owner, developer, engineer to work with the county to relocate the connector road off of the property.
I have a motion of a second.
Second.
Time to vote. Mr. Moan?
Moan, yes.
Dotson, yes.
Trippet, yes.
Morrison, yes.
Bowden, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Oats, yes.
Klein, yes.
Manier, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Marshton, yes.
Unger, yes.
Chair votes, yes. This item is postponed for 60 days?
Yes.
To, it'll come back before, so, thank you. Our next item is also a hearing item for a conditional use permit, number 07-19 for Middletown Firearms, and it's being presented by Mr. Klein.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Before I start with my presentation for the record, you all have been provided all of the public comment that's been received in writing up until this point. You received email correspondence yesterday, and then anything that's been received today was provided to you in a hard copy before the meeting, so I just want to make that clear for the public record. That also includes the new exhibits that are prepared by Greenway Engineering, which will be presented as part of their remarks later in the public hearing. This property is located at 6519 Valley Pike, immediately north of the town of Middletown and south of Falkloos Road. It is in the Bat Creek Magisterial District and is identified with parcel identification number 85-A-10. The property is presently zoned RA, Rural Areas Zoning District, and the current land use of the property is residential and agricultural. The proposed use is a commercial outdoor shooting range. Directing your attention to the screen, the subject property encompasses 34 acres and is outlined in blue. It is bounded on the west by Valley Pike, Route 11 North, and is bounded on the east by I-81. Again, the property is immediately south and adjacent to Falkloos Road. And the, the property currently contains some outbuildings and a single-family detached stone resident, or brick residence. The applicant, Middletown Firearms, is proposing four separate gun ranges with covered shooting base. They're proposing a 25-yard range, which would be fully enclosed with eight shooting lanes and a concrete floor for tactical training, another 25-yard range with eight shooting lanes, a 50-yard range with six shooting lanes, and a 100-yard range with, with six shooting lanes. As part of their range operations, they're proposing side berms on each range, eight feet in height and six feet wide, and a rear berm, 16 feet in height. There also will be range support buildings, including a classroom space, storage buildings, restrooms for users of the range, and a small check-in area that will sell ammunition targets and cleaning supplies for use at the range. This is an illustrative sketch provided by the applicant as part of their conditional use permit application. I would note, you all have been provided an updated exhibit, and Mr. Wyatt will walk you through that when he makes his remarks. But again, for orientation, Route 11 North makes up the eastern front edge of the property, and 81 sandwiches the property on the, the rear. The shooting range is located generally on the southern border of the property, and it's somewhat in the middle of the, of the property away from the road. Providing additional detail, the applicant has provided a range layout, which includes the four shooting ranges, the 225-yard ranges, a 50-yard range, and a 100-yard range. Denotes the location of the covered shooting ranges, bays, and the location, the proposed location of the outbuildings. The property is surrounded by other RA Rural Areas Zone property, which includes open space, agricultural and forestal uses, and single-family detached residences immediately to the north and across from the property, across Valley Pike. Commercial shooting ranges outdoor are permitted use in the RA zoning district with an approved conditional use permit. Further, the zoning ordinance provides additional regulations for specific uses outlined in Section 165, 20415, that provides specific sighting, screening requirements for commercial shooting ranges. Should the Planning Commission find this use to be appropriate, staff has recommended the following conditions. Number one, that all review agency comments be complied with at all times. Number two, that an engineered site plan in accordance with the requirements of Article 8 of the Frederick County zoning ordinance be submitted to and subject to approval by Frederick County prior to the establishment of the use, and that the site plan shall address the additional regulations for specific uses outlined in 165, 20415 of the zoning ordinance. Number three, that the hours of operation for the shooting range activity be limited to Monday through Saturday, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and Sunday from 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Number four, that all shooting range activities would be supervised by qualified personnel at all times. Number five, that a one monument-style sign with a maximum sign area not to exceed 50 square feet and not to exceed 10 feet in height would be permitted, and that any expansion or modification of this use would require the approval of a new conditional use permit. Following a public hearing this evening, staff is seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission to forward to the Board of Supervisors on this proposed conditional use permit. I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have. Evan Wyatt with Greenway Engineering is here representing the applicants, as is Travis Dodson, the applicant representing Middletown Firearms, and we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Any questions for Mr. Klein? Thanks, sir. With the applicant, Mr. Evan Wyatt, like to come forward. There he are.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Evan Wyatt with Greenway Engineering. Beside me is Travis Dodson with Middletown Firearms, who's the applicant for the conditional use permit request. We thank you for being here this evening and an opportunity to, to further provide information specific to the request. Tyler did a good job of covering the general specifics of the area, so I will not revisit that, but I will draw your attention back to the, the map exhibit that is up on screen. What we were asked to do to help visualize the property, the location of the shooting range, things of that nature, was, was to provide the, the rough schematic that you have with your original application, so what we've done there. As, as Tyler pointed out, the county does have regulations that guide this permitted land use should a CUP be required. One of them is that it requires the shooting range itself to be a minimum of 1,000 feet from any residential building. And I know it's a little bit difficult to see, but you can see the leading arrows from, from the most proximity close residential units to the shooting range, and everything complies with the 1,000-foot minimum standard. Another thing that I think is important for the location of the range, of course, the orientation of the range is, is away from US Route 11 and is heading in this direction, which of course is a very heavily wooded portion of the site. As Tyler did discuss in his presentation, and Travis will talk about this in a little bit more detail, but the design of the facility, of course, the blue represents the, the three distance shooting ranges. The green space in front is the covered shooting area, and then the red area around the blue is the earth berms that would be done around the perimeter of the facility. So, from a site layout standpoint, we can meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance that are set up to provide extra protections for existing residences around the shooting range. The other exhibit that we put together, you'll see that you have a point 1, 2, 3, and 4, and up in this part of the chart, those are decimal readings. So, one of the things that the Dodsons wanted to make sure of when they were looking at the property was to determine what sort of noise impacts would be specific to this application. The four points that you see, they actually took decimal readings when they were on the site shooting. They did, they did different shooting with various sized firearms that would be permitted on the range if the CUP is approved, and they took decimal readings. The, the points that you see, and I don't know if, yeah, okay. So, you can see that the first point, which is right there... So you can see that the first point, which is right there along Route 11 near the southern part of the property, the decibel readings range between 55 to 66 dB A. And I should point out that this was based on multiple shooters at the same time in an open field. So obviously, their berms in the facility aren't there, so this does represent a worst-case scenario. And then point number two, which is up in the northern part of the property along Route 11, as you can see, the dB A range was slightly lower at that point. Then there is a point that was taken here, which is closest to the range and closest to the existing residents on this property. And that reading actually came in at the highest, and it was, worst-case scenario, was an 80 dB A. And then further down, near the limits of the property, as you're getting towards Interstate 81, the dB A range came in under 70. So what does that really mean? So what we've done is we've provided information that we obtained for noise levels that provides an example of what a dB A sound would be in conformance with those readings. And you can see that for the readings that ranged a little higher than 50 and up to 80 at various points in the site, this is the noise level that you would expect to see with that dB A reading. Now, once again, the shot, when the shots were done and documented, this was done in an open field condition. So we would believe that with the covered shooting bays, that with the berming, that there would be some sound attenuation that would make this reduced even more. So we wanted to share that information with you. The other thing that was not really covered in the staff report, but I think is important, Virginia Department of Transportation has looked at this, and they believe that a commercial entrance would be required and can be sighted on Route 11 serving the property. And as Tyler mentioned, with the site plan, of course, we would have to conform to all review agency comments. What I would like to do at this point in time is just give Travis a opportunity, just give you a general idea of the thought behind the design, the standard operating procedures that have been developed for the range, and then any other comments he may have about Middletown Firearms. Once we're done with that, we'll certainly be happy to answer any questions of the commission.
Thank you. Mr. Wyatt, Mr. Dodson?
Chairman, thank you. Thank you all for having me today. My name is Travis Dodson, owner of Middletown Firearms. So as you see the layout here in red, those are the 16-foot berms by RA standards. Now, behind it, you're looking at, if you can see the topography. This is not the one, but the other one. Can we get to the other one?
Sure.
You can see there's a rise in land even over that. So there will be a bigger berm even behind that berm to help protect anything that, any questionable things about 81. We are keeping it short distance. We find a lot of hunters around this area. Need that 50, 100 yards to sight in their gun and use around here. Unfortunately, there is no area around here that somebody can shoot publicly in Frederick County and just go and, you know, have a good time with their family and do it in a safe manner where there's an RSO on site. To go on the standard operating procedures, when somebody shows up at the, at the site, they'll be parking at the east end, east of the two buildings that you see right there. And the southern building will be the check-in, check-out, where an employee will inspect their firearms, make sure that they're safe, and that they have the right ammunition, no incendiary or anything like that. And then also get experience levels as well with the shooter. If there is a need, if somebody is a new shooter, we will be advising the RSO that's on shift at that time, that that is a new shooter, and that they might need some extra help. And then we'll send another RSO to help that person, so the other RSO can maintain the range as well. So we can have two or three RSOs at the same time. Depends on how busy we get. So once that's done, all guns are cased, and they will head to the green portion right there. On the hour, they will shoot for 45 minutes and have 15 minutes to, after they're shooting for 45 minutes, they'll have time to reset their targets upon the range officer stating clear. And they'll go up and change their targets out and whatnot. Then after that, they'll reset, the range officer calls the range hot, and then repeat the process for the rest of the day. I heard earlier mention about 10 o'clock. We only use that time right there. Our only purpose for that time is for law enforcement officers. I'm a big law enforcement promoter around here, and I believe they don't have adequate training facilities and a range around here to use. So we are going to be using that time, that one hour before we open up to the public, to use for them. So before 10 o'clock, or I mean, at 10 o'clock, there would be no civilians or anything like that, just law enforcement only from 10 to 11. So just wanted to clear that up if that was anything. But, and it doesn't happen every day, so it doesn't mean we're going to open at 10 every day. Just wanted to clear that up.
Thanks, sir.
So, Mr. Chairman, in closing, what we've tried to do is to give the Planning Commission a perspective of the layout with the topography that you saw. One thing I should have mentioned, of course, you can see how the slope of the land goes down in this fashion. When the range is actually located in this position, it will be set at a lower elevation. It'll be downward directed for shooting. A couple of other things that Travis didn't cover that I think are important. This is confined to the range only. There's no skeet or clay shooting. It's all directional down. The range location is a little bit different than the schematic you saw in the application in that it actually sits about 700 feet south of US Route 11, and it sits further down the hill. I meant to add those things, and I forgot. So with that said, we'll be happy to answer any questions. And following the public comment period, if appropriate, we'd like a chance to address any comments we heard.
That's fine. Thanks, sir. Any questions? Mr. Wyatt, Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Wyatt, do you have the elevations of three points? The shooting point, the target point, and center line of 81?
So I can tell you the center line of 81 is at a 725 elevation. And the location of this contour where the green is also sits at a 725. The, where we'll be shooting, the-
The 100-meter range, not the-
Yes, that's correct. The elevation up closer to the front of the site is about a 750 to a 745. So that's the high point of the site, and it drops down as you go to the range.
But you don't have the elevation at the end of the 100-meter range?
No, I don't. But once again, the existing topography where you see the hillside, that's obviously going to be graded down with the range as it's built, and then that earth, if you will, from that shaping of the range will be used for the berming.
The contour map I have doesn't have any numbers on it. Here one that does.
I think it's five-foot contours.
I have one that shows contours. Why, he's looking at that. Anyone else? Mr. Oates?
Well, Mr. Dodson, you got a pretty good community interest here. Did you give any consideration to maybe putting up a couple of pole sheds where you would have, say, the west, the north, and the south sides, the walls, the sound, and just have the opening facing east towards the shooting or the targets?
Are you talking for a sound barrier?
Yeah, instead of just having a covered shooting area, which is basically-
That is definitely in our plans.
Okay.
Any sound abatement that we can do to help with anything?
I was thinking of, instead of just a covered shooting stand, which is like a pavilion, but actually put that in a pole shed type scenario where they're inside a building shooting out.
Okay.
Have you considered that?
We've looked at a lot of options. That is one of them. When we get down to it, we'll see what we can actually do.
Because you have bathrooms, storage, that way you could combine it all in one larger building.
I'll be discussing that with Evan as well a little bit further.
Another quick comment, too, with point number three. That property corner is about 270 feet away from the closest point of the shooting range. The staff report identifies the need for buffering where you have a residential use adjacent to it. So we would be evaluating that area with staff also, and if supplemental planning was needed, that would be provided with the site plan. And once again, that seems to be the point where the loudest dB A, which reached 80 in an open field condition, was.
Anyone else? Mr. Moulton had his hand first. I'll get you, Mr. Triplett.
Thank you. Just a quick question. It kind of builds on what Mr. Oates was asking. In terms of noise, I appreciate the effort that was made to try to get an understanding of what the noise levels are there. I think that, you know, that's, the methodology, you know, isn't something that I think we can really, I think, kind of hang our hat on necessarily. It gives us a good idea. Yeah, but what we can do, I think, as we're looking at this and then as the board would consider this, is keep in mind the different measures that can be done, you know, for noise attenuation. So I think some of what was being suggested, these are some of the questions that I was having. And would there be, or to what extent have you considered, you know, overhead baffles and things of that nature? Because there are a lot of things that can be done to attenuate sound and also kind of contribute to safety, you know, as well. And I think for me, depending on how we're moving forward this evening, those are some of the commitments. Those are some of the details that are important, you know, to understanding how this thing's going to function, you know, down the line. So if you could touch on what you have in mind.
Correct. And we've also thought about that as well. Something to think about on our benches, we will have installed devices that people cannot raise their muzzle above a certain limit. So that'll stop any accidents from happening. I've seen before, they're built with sticks, PVC pipe. There's many ways to do it. But we're not too sure which way we're going to do it yet, but we, that's what we plan on doing with our benches to extra safeguard. I understand we still have RSOs on hand, but we want to make sure there's an extra measure for rifles especially.
Is the, from a noise attenuation perspective, like baffling, is that something that's on the-
Yes, that's definitely something we're doing as well. We plan on baffles.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Triplett?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, but we found that the end of the 100-yard range to 81, is that correct, 1,200 feet? Is that from the red, the end of it?
It's 1,068 feet from the back of the earth berm to the Interstate 81 right away. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Unger?
And we're getting ready to hear this, but just for the people that I have talked to, and everybody's got a different thing, but the majority of the people I've talked to are more concerned about noise. And if we had some way to please people, knowing that these baffles would keep it down to whatever, and whatever buildings you put up, and we knew that it wasn't going to affect as many people as what, you know, people are concerned about, it would be so helpful if we knew that for, you know, there was a decision made on it.
Mr. Moulton?
Sorry. And I understand your concern. I'm sorry, Chairman.
Mr. Unger, if I'm following your comment correctly, I think what you're hoping is that there's a condition on the permit that talks about some design standards for the facility with minimum requirements for baffling and other things for sound attenuation?
Mm-hmm.
Is that-
That's for sure.
Okay. You're planning on doing that design anyway, are you not?
Correct. And it's kind of hard before, like you said, to actually give you the results before it's actually done. But we're taking the steps. We've shown that we've done the testing. We spent all day out there shooting these firearms and different kind of variations, and all the way up to 50-cal, which we're not even allowing, 338 as well. 338 Lapua is not allowed. But it's just hard to, we're going to try to mitigate it as best as we can. And I want you all to trust us with this, and I know that's not enough, but- But it's-
Okay, we, calm down.
So I think what we'll do, once questions are over, we'll listen to public comment. And if we have a good recommendation following that, we'll-
Moulton?
I had a question on the testing of the highway sound. Was there a testing of the levels of the highway sound on that property?
Yeah, actually, there was, and it's kind of interesting. Points one and two, as I showed you, they have the dB A readings at those points, the range in the mid-50s to the mid-60s. And then what the group did, because the way they did this, they had the group of shooters. They had a radio person saying when it was time to do everything. They also took readings on Route 11 when they were not shooting and when traffic was coming. And the interesting thing that I saw with the study results was the dB A levels on Route 11 with traffic were actually higher than the readings that you see with the group shooting. And that does make some sense because of the proximity of the vehicle to the road and the buildings where those readings were taken. Because this range is sitting 700 feet south of, or I'm sorry, east of Route 11, where the vehicles are right there on 11.
One other question. What's the highest caliber that you'll be shooting at this range?
Anything below 338 Lapua.
I'll follow up with that, but in your, so up to but not including 50 caliber BMG. Because in your permitted uses, you do have rifles up to 50 caliber. So that would imply that you are allowing 50 caliber.
We will not be allowing 50 caliber 338 Lapua. We will- I don't know why that was on there.
That's okay. The concern there is easy to address. If there is a cap on what can be permissible on the range, we can certainly add that as a condition.
I think we'll need to look at that. Any other questions? The applicant? I just have a couple before we move off the question period. Let's get back to the elevations, because I do have a topography in front of me. We do have noise and traffic as a concern, but I have another concern, I guess, with our distance that we're shooting towards an interstate highway. And- Don't make me use the gavel, just. So we need to walk through this process just a little bit for my well-being and everyone else's. We've got an elevation where the shooter will be standing at 725. I've got center line of Interstate 81 is 725. I've got berms, and on my topography here, that berm that goes off to the end, I'm going to use the term berm, two different kinds of berms. The berm, natural berm, for the topography, the elevations I've got are 725, and it's going down. It's going down into that swale, going down into that natural little valley there that you have, because it goes down to 700. It goes, keeps on going down. Then we talk about the height of the berm. So just walk me through that. Height of the berm is from finished floor to the top of the berm.
Right.
So I've got a descending topography, so that means that berm's going to get, some places from the bottom of that berm, it's going to be 20, 30 foot high, because it's got to be 16 foot higher than the end of that.
That's correct.
Okay. Explain, is that the, because right now I'm seeing a level topography. There is some woods there. I'm a golfer, old golfer. Trees are 90% air, is what we say in the golfing world. So we're shooting munitions here. So I just got to be clear in my mind that when we're exceeding, we're 1,000 feet. It's not very far for any munitions. 338, my son's an ex-military scout sniper. So he brings me up to speed on stuff real quick, especially on the safety side of things. It doesn't take much of an elevation to go top of a 16-foot tall berm. It can be a misfire. It can be someone just is not paying attention. Everybody turns their head, and pretty soon, and he cracks my wrist now and then, too. So explain how that topography figures in to this design.
The concept of the design is to have the, once again- The concept of the design is to have the, once again, to have the range going in a downward direction below the 725 contour. At the base of the end of the 100-foot shooting range, or the 100-yard shooting range, would be where the toe of the slope of the 16-foot berm would start, and then you would build it up and you would have to chase it back to the toe of slope to catch it. We probably are talking about a berm that's going to be about 60 feet in width, once you get to the 16-foot cap. So that's how we would be designing and tying it in.
One thing I will say there, that most shooters do not like to shoot downhill, but you're going to design this to shoot downhill?
No, I think the, I think the topography is going to force that.
Okay. What was the caliber of munitions when you did your testing?
Or we went from 22 long rifle all the way up to 50 cal. We did 223, 243, 30OT6, 3030, 308, 12-gauge, 9mm, .45 ACP, 357, 762 by 504R, 762 by 39.
Time of day when you did this?
Afternoon.
Afternoon. Okay. Thank you. While I have you here, and I seem to have the floor, as wants to be, if no one else has any questions, when you were talking about you're going to have 1,000 members, 1,000 members, we hope you're successful if this goes through. At any one time, how many people will be on your property and on your range? Thinking there's 28 people on the range, 28 people waiting, people in the parking lot, how many people do you think will be there that you have to accommodate?
I think at max capacity, you are going to have a capacity issue. You'll have some overlap at the end of the 45-minute period when they're breaking down, the next group's coming in. So just by the limits of the facility, you're probably talking about 60 to 70 people, tops. I don't know the amount of folks from the sheriff's office that would be training, but I think you had said it was around 10 to 15 at a time.
That's, the average is around that number.
I had like 68 or so, so that's good. All right. That's good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else have any questions? Please leave. Thank you.
All right.
I will ask that we do not cheer, clap. We understand you're all support or non-support, but please, let's, as we have a large crowd and a lot to get through tonight, but I appreciate, and I'm sure they do too, but let's keep this moving. Before I open the public hearing, we have a large crowd, we have a lot of people who might speak for or against this, we have a three-minute time limit. Mr. Rudy will keep a close watch on the three-minute time limit. You come and address me, we don't talk to the crowd, we don't, I won't allow the cheering and the uproarous behavior that we just heard, but we do speak, and you have your three minutes here and address us here. Do not take questions from the audience, and if you please follow those rules, we'll get through, and I think everything will be just fine. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Please come to the podium, state your name, Magdalen District. Yes, sir, right here.
Chairman Kenny, my name is Darren Johnson. I went to, I just heard about this yesterday in the evening, at, when I was at the, down at the church that's across from the property. I went to Congress, my Congresswoman Jennifer Wexson's office, I know I have 10 minutes, I'm going to make it really fast, and I got information from...
Three minutes, sir.
Three minutes, yeah, three minutes. I found that the constituents, the representative gave me, you know, a direction to go. What I have here, I have like five comments from this book, it's a 58-page booklet, it's titled "Office of Health, Safety, and Security from the U.S. Department of Energy on Range Design Criteria." On outdoor range design, one of the main things on site selection, it talks about SDZs, and I'm going to explain that shortly. It should not exceed, extend across travel roads, navigable highway, waterways, roadways, or other areas. Also, outdoor ranges should be oriented to eliminate firing into the sun. That's really important. The range should be oriented to the north or slightly to the northeast. The ideal direction is between due north and 25 degrees northeast, which this is not. A surface danger zone, this is the SDZ. The SDZ should be established to contain all projectiles and debris caused by firing ammunition and explosives. See Table 1, SDZ. Dimensions are dictated by the types of ammunition, types of targets, types of firing activities allowed on the range. A basic SDZ consists of three parts: impact area, ricochet area, and secondary danger area. The primary danger area established for the impact of all rounds extends five degrees to either side, left to right, limits of the fire and downrange. The ricochet area is five degrees to either side of the impact area and extends downrange to the maximum range of any ammunition to be used on a range. Again, that's very important, the maximum range of any ammunition used on the range. The second danger area is an area parallel to the 100 yards outside of the outermost limits of the ricochet area and extend downrange to the maximum range of any ammunition to be used in the range. The terrain should be high enough to capture rounds fired at a maximum 15-degree muzzle elevation. Their design right here says it's 100 yards long with a, the berm height, well, that measures to a 3.1 degree coverage at that point. On this little drawing here, which is in this, you can download this online, it says right along the side of the range, when you lay out a range, it says maximum range of most powerful cartridge used. That's this line right here to this thing, I don't have any tips here. On the maximum range thing, a 22 caliber, the lowest caliber they probably use, the maximum range distance is 1,531 yards. The distance from the back of their thing, the distance from the back is 383 yards to Highway 81.
Be quick, sir.
Highway 81, quick shot, this is I-1, this is at the west run on the property. It is a clear shot to the firing line from 81 to a truck. There is no berm, nothing blocking this part of I-81, right where all the trucks turn off at the truck stop.
And with that, I want to get you to wrap it up. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And I, if you table this, I will send you a PDF of that.
Thank you, sir. The next, please, come to, state your name, Magdalen District.
Hi, my name is Buzz Grover. I do not live in Frederick County, but I am the chief instructor for Middletown Firearms, and I'm also a chief range safety officer for the NRA. I'm an NRA rifle pistol shotgun instructor, I'm an NRA training counselor, which means I'm a train-to-trainer, chief range safety officer. I worked for four years at Peacemaker National Training Center, which is one of the more complex range environments on the East Coast. I have taught rifle pistol shotgun at George Mason University in the past and continue to do so on an intermittent basis. I have a lot of experience, I've been working at Middletown Firearms, weekends teaching firearm safety courses and concealed carry courses for about three years, and I've worked with some of the best shooters in the country, including Tom Givens and other folks I could list who you probably wouldn't recognize. I'm not here to talk at length, I just wanted to make sure you guys understood that there's a fair amount of expertise that's going to be attached to this project, and I'm more than welcome to, or more than happy to speak to a lot of that if you have any questions. But I have been shooting since I was 10 years old, I understand safety, I've never had an accident on my watch, I never plan on having one, I will be training the staff there and making sure that they abide by high standards, and I will note that I'm not a very pleasant person to make a mistake on a range with, and I'm going to make sure the staff are the same way. Things are going to be handled in a very safe manner if this does move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members, if I can answer any questions, I'm happy to.
Not allowed for that, but thank you, sir. Next, please, this person right here, there.
My name is Ken Goodwin. I'm a 20-year resident of Winchester and a 10-year member of the Unitarian Universalist Church across the road from the proposed shooting range. I too have been involved with guns and shooting ranges almost all my life. I was a competitive shooter with the Maryland State Rifle Team and past president of the Green Belt Gun Club in Greenbelt, Maryland. I'm an NRA certified rifle coach and served as a range officer at the Isaac Walton Range near Poolsville, Maryland for more than 20 years. I've seen a lot of accidents and foolish behavior on shooting ranges. I'd like to see a new shooting range constructed in Frederick County, but it must be a safe one. There will be a need to... The range as proposed will not be safe. Shooting will be directed toward I-81 less than a quarter of a mile away. Regardless of how well the staff is trained to supervise the public shooters, there will be accidents, mistakes, ricochets, and just plain misses. It isn't hard to shoot over that berm. These was, these mistakes will send bullets past the berm toward I-81. It will happen most frequently with handguns. The popular handgun calibers such as 9mm and 357 Magnum have a maximum range of about a mile and can easily go over the berm and trees to hit trucks and cars on the highway. The popular 223 caliber shot from the AR-15 style rifle can go about two miles. Commandeer rifles such as 308 and 30OT6 can go almost three miles. The engineer's review of the application says that Department of Energy standards will be followed. The DOE Range Design Criteria, which I have a copy of here, it's readily available on the internet, it says that the range, the first range design criteria to look at is the surface danger zone, as they call the SDZ. And one of the conditions of that is it should not extend across traveled roads. There will need to be a baffle system to prevent stray projectiles from going toward the highway or beyond it to residential areas.
You could summarize, it would be great.
If the proposal goes forward, then a baffle system should be required. To do so, it's not just following standards, it's just playing common sense. A much better solution would be to find a different range location that has a hill or a mountainside for a backstop. We're fortunate that Frederick County has many such mountainsides.
I'll have to get you to wrap it up there. Thanks, sir. Thank you.
Members of the planning commission, my name is Ben Butler, and I am an attorney in Winchester and represent Betty and John Lumpkin, who have the property to the immediate north, known as Indian Springs. I think you can see from the crowd here today, and what you're going to hear is the noise aspect, so I'm not going to dwell on this. What I'd like you to focus on is the standards that you have under your code for conditional use permit. And just to refresh your memories, because I know you all deal with this all the time, but you're dealing with under, under 165, 103.2, which is conditional use permit, and I'm not going to say this verbatim, but the first point that they raised, there's six points, four of these I want to point out to you as the character and the established pattern of development of the area proposed to use. In that area between Stevens City and Middletown, you'll find predominantly farming. You'll find some residential, but it's, but these are really farms in here. And that is what's happening with my client, who has a historical property to the immediate north. A second element that is in there, that this planning commission should find, is that the conditional use permit shall be in harmony with and shall not adversely affect the use and enjoyment of surrounding properties. Just consider for a moment, and my client has provided these measurements to me, but you're within .6 miles and .3 miles of two churches, you're within 1.2 miles of the Middletown Elementary School, and you're within 1.1 mile of the Legacy Christian School. It's 1.6 miles to Lord Fairfax. Now, and you're adjacent to historic property, as I indicated to you. So truly, a shooting range of any type is not in harmony, and it will adversely affect my client's property. Frankly, I had no idea it was bad as it was until tonight, when I found out it was going to be seven days a week. Anybody who's gone to a resort and gone around where they have trap shooting, and you hear the multiple shooting, it is unnerving, particularly if you're not used to it. Another thing is, is that the conditional use permit is to be accorded with the policies expressed in the comprehensive plan. So if you look at your 2035 comprehensive plan, what is, and this is a verbatim statement, "The rural area best exhibits the nature, beauty, viewsheds, and tranquility for which Frederick County is known." That's what they're, that's in your comprehensive plan. And then the second point I would point out to you is this, is the county develop that transfer of development rights to try to preserve your rural areas, where you take, and this is one of the areas where you could take the...
Just summarize real quick.
One last point, the conditional use shall not adversely affect the natural and environment of the county. And what I would say to you is, if you'll just look at your code.
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir. I'm sorry, ma'am, I'll get you next.
Good evening. My name is Mark Lor. I'm a resident of Winchester, but also a member of the Unitarian Universalist Church of the Shenandoah Valley, located on Route 11, less than a half mile from the proposed shooting range. I also serve as our treasurer on the Board of Directors. I'm here to speak against this proposal. Our church has had an increasing presence in the valley since the mid-1970s. Some 18 years ago, we decided to make a large financial commitment in and to Frederick County. We built a $1 million church building on which a little less than half remains to be paid. We made this decision because we counted on both a growing congregation and on rental of the facility for individual and community gatherings. We've had our ups and downs, but we've managed to work within the constraints of a very tight budget to expand our numbers and our church programs. We've had every reason to believe that our decision was the right one, and that our church would continue to prosper and grow. However, an outdoor shooting range so close to us would cast serious doubt on our financial future. The value of our property would undoubtedly decrease. We would lose significant revenues from meditation, weddings, memorial services, and other spiritual gatherings that count on our peaceful rural location. Even more importantly, we would lose both current and future members and their financial support. And they would understandably seek a quieter and more appropriate setting for their religious The upshot could be likely a severe curtailment of our activities, which would in turn threaten us with a downward financial spiral, from which it would be very difficult to recover. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thanks, sir. I will make one brief announcement, the young lady, you can come forward. Anybody that would like to speak, if they do want to just get in line, kind of where she was standing there, so we do have some order to go on there, so just form a line back from, say, the column there in the middle, we'll go from there.
Go ahead.
And behave yourselves now.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Jenkins. I'm a resident of the Red Bud District. I've lived in this county for my entire life. I've stayed here because of the beauty of the landscape, the history of the area, and the county's commitment to maintaining a tranquil lifestyle for those that choose to make their homes in the more rural areas of the county. The construction of the shooting range at the intersection of... The construction of a shooting range at the intersection of Valley Pike and Valcluse Road will have a dramatic and permanent effect on the qualities of this community that I and many of the people here hold most dear. As you've seen in the information provided by the Historic Resources Advisory Board, the area is rich in history. In addition to the nearby Indian Spring location, the 19th-century Stickley House is on the very site where this proposed shooting range would be built. History surrounds the site, and you should not ignore it when making your decision this evening. I do have a personal stake in this. I keep a horse at a local farm. Double J Stables is a boarding facility less than half a mile from the site in question. The facility is home to over 50 horses with almost as many individual owners. We enjoy hundreds of acres there. Jennifer and Jason McDonald are here today, and they run the facility in addition to farming Springwood Farm, which has several hundred acres that they have been farming for generations in this county. I fear that the establishment of a seven-day-per-week shooting range would cause them to lose many borders and would make it very difficult to attract more clients. Horses and gunfire do not mix, despite what film and television would have you believe. The constant noise from a shooting range would cause many to take their business to a quieter location. My personal interests aside, I ask you to consider the economic effects a shooting range would have on the community. The McDonald's business will be affected. Valcluse Road is home to two wedding and event venues, the Inn at Valcluse Spring and Trumpet Vine Farm. Will their businesses be able to attract clients and guests? Will their businesses survive? Does anyone want to get married with gunfire in the background? Homeowners adjacent to the property will be dramatically affected. Residents here, they live here and they move here for a quiet rural life. A shooting range will obliterate that quiet from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., six days a week, and 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. on Sundays. Those that would seek to move will find the value of their homes much reduced with a gun range in their very backyard. I hope that you will agree that this exact location in Frederick County is not a good place for a shooting range. Middletown Firearms absolutely deserves the opportunity to expand their business, but it should not be at the expense of other local businesses and the private residents that live there as well. I support hunting. I support the safe use of firearms for defense and for recreation, but I ask you today to deny Middletown Firearms' permit application for the sale, for the sake of the residents and the business owners of the area, and for the sake of the history present in the small community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
My name is Michelle Fisher. I'm a longtime member of the Unitarian Church in Stevens City, and also a resident of the Backstreet District. I'm also the owner of Mindful Shenandoah Valley and a trained meditation teacher. And for the past decade, I've been leading weekly meditation community at the church, which is now attended by about 40 or 50 people every week. And there are also more than 3,000 people on the email list. This is a large, well-established, very dedicated community. Many of them are here, and it's often referred to as the second church within the church. Also, for the past decade, the church has been the home to bimonthly silent, day-long meditation retreats that I lead on Saturdays. And these are regularly attended by more than 100 people every time from all over the region. And all of these people are coming out to this church for a rare space of silence and sanctuary, which we actually spend a lot of time and effort and care creating for them. Needless to say, if this range goes through because of the noise, these retreats will end, as will this large 10-year-old meditation community. And as a result, my main source of livelihood, as well as my contribution to the community for the past decade, will be gravely affected. As you might imagine, as a meditation teacher with more than 30 years of experience, I'm uniquely trained to teach people about the great benefits of silence, and I've also researched and taught about the great harm that comes from being exposed to excessive noise. And I actually looked up our Frederick County Noise Ordinance, which appears to agree with this assessment. It states, quote, "At certain levels, noise can be detrimental to the health, safety, welfare, and quality of life of inhabitants of the county, and in the public interest, such noise should be restricted. It is therefore the policy of the county to reduce and eliminate where possible excessive noise and related adverse conditions in the community, and to prohibit unnecessary, excessive, harmful, and annoying noises from all sources." It also states that "the creation of any noise on or near the grounds of any school, court, public building, place of worship, or hospital in a manner that is plainly audible within such school, court, public building, place of worship, or hospital, and which noise interferes with the operation of the institution would be in violation of our own noise ordinance." So for this and so many other reasons, I strongly believe that this proposal is a radically inappropriate planning choice for this community. And just one more thing, just because this... Thank you. I think I'll end there. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Chairman Kenny, fellow supervisors, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm going to get this computer going, and we'll be in business. Sorry about that. All right. I'm here to talk about economic impact. I'm a member of the Unitarian Universalist Church of the Shenandoah Valley for the last 13 years, and there have been lots of studies about the economic impact that churches have on the local community. It's called the halo effect. We all know that churches don't pay property tax, but they do have a great economic impact on our community. How much, you might wonder? The University of Pennsylvania conducted a study over 54 churches and synagogues, and they looked at the money that's generated by weddings, funerals, and different activities in their facilities, and that they really do have a strong economic impact to the community. Calculations are not only from the staff's salary, but other streams of income come from contractors who repair the roof, the HVAC system, the plumbing, the alarm system, plowing the snow, and even cutting the grass. A next other stream of income comes from rentals of our church for weddings, funerals, and other groups, such as the Mindful Meditation Group that Cheryl just mentioned. And the largest stream of money goes into our community with church members spending money in the community when they come to church. Caterers for weddings, gas, food at local grocery stores and restaurants, and taxes from retail stores. Hardly a week goes by that I don't check on the bargains at Stevens City Outlet. The bottom line is, according to the study results, a church of our size generates about $1 million to the local economy. That money is recycled in our community for an even greater effect. It doesn't take into account the tax dollars generated from retail sales, meals tax, and local hotel taxes from people that come to our church and enjoy the area. It would be very difficult to meditate, listen to a sermon, or concentrate on pastoral counseling if the background, if you heard the staccato blast from a .306, or especially the .50-cal BMG rounds. The proposal, as it exists, includes that firearm, which is designed to go over 1,000 yards, and it also is designed to go through a truck and hit a soldier on the backside of it. You know, I really do... No disrespect to the engineer, but I have a strong objection to the noise ordinance. I would encourage all the supervisors to do your own research, but a .306, a .50-cal BMG, the .338 Louisville makes it a lot louder, use signature and decimal readings than was stated in the study. I would really encourage you to please do your own research about that. The decimal readings are way higher.
Sir, could you do me a favor? I was busy writing. I missed your name in Massdale District.
I apologize. Evan Clark. I live in Winchester, and I do attend the Unitarian Universalist Church.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Karen Nelson. I live at 530 Valcluse Road, less than one mile from the location of the proposed shooting range. I urge this planning commission to deny the request for Middletown Firearms for two different reasons. It will destroy the quality of the neighborhood, and the proposal is not ready for full consideration. This area is becoming largely residential. The proposed shooting range is surrounded by residential homes on three sides, and is only a mile from my and other homes on Valcluse Road. I can hear the traffic on I-81 a mile away, so I can't imagine what I'm going to hear when there's a shooting range. The noise will decrease the quality of life and the property values of the residents and the businesses along Valcluse Road and along Valley Pike, who live in the area. It's unconscionable to me that it's such a short distance, less than a mile, from an elementary school. When those little kindergartners I sub at that school, I can't even imagine when they hear gunfire. It breaks my heart. The area along Route 11 could be much better served by businesses that provide services to this growing population, and likely would produce much more tax revenue if it did. I also note the objections of the Historic Resources Advisory Board, which states that this area may qualify for the State Register of Historic Places. Tourism is a major industry in this area, with several historic sites within just a few miles of the proposed site. The county will be much better served preserving this industry than diminishing it. Therefore, I urge the commission to deny the request for these reasons. Even if you do not agree to deny the request, you must agree that the proposal is not complete, and at the very least, must be tabled at this time. The fire marshal was unable to make any recommendation on the proposed plan because he has yet to receive the site plan. The Health Department has raised concerns about the source of drinking water. Finally, the Department of Transportation has indicated that the current plan does not meet the minimum intersection site distance requirements for a commercial entrance. And most importantly to my heart is, I moved to this area for the peaceful tranquility of living in the country, and even though I can hear the noise from the highway, I think this is the wrong place to put a shooting range. Therefore, I ask the commissioners to deny, or at least delay, action on this request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
My name is Franklin Martin. I live in Stevenson on Gun Club Road. About 20 yards from my back door is a gun club. Honestly, it sounds not bad. I mean, we bought and built a new house right behind the gun club. Keep hearing stuff about noise and everything like that, trees, barriers. We have like a row of pine trees. You can barely hear anything. A new school is being built less than a quarter mile from the entrance of the gun club, right on the other side of Snowden Bridge. Have a church less than half a mile away, farms all around, housing on three sides. I mean, all the stuff I'm hearing, less than a mile from I-81. It's an open-air gun club with no berms. So, I mean, I understand, you know, people may not be used to it, but it'll also bring revenue to the county. Sucks having to go all the way to Manassas to go shoot, or Chantilly, you know? I can't spend the money here. An hour of shooting for me and the kids is $100 when I spend the money here.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Sue Teal. I live in the Back Creek District. I own a home built in 1848 that is about a mile north of the proposed firing range. I was on the Kansas State University Rifle Team, so I'm not completely ignorant of firearms. However, I would like to draw the planning commission's attention to the opinion letter, which was referred to previously, dated September 18th, from the Historic Resources Advisory Board. The Board does not support the CUP for a commercial outdoor shooting range because of the potential noise and the visual impact on historic adjoining and surrounding properties, which make up a potential rural historic community. Also, within a mile radius of the site, or even closer than a mile, there are at least three churches, Legacy Christian Academy and Middletown Elementary School. And as has been referred to frequently, the site is between US 11 and I-81. There are noise issues and safety issues that I do not believe can be mitigated to the satisfaction of anyone in the surrounding community. Furthermore, some of the owners of the adjoining properties have been farming the land and engaging in related agricultural activities for their entire lives, and they deserve your attention and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
I'm going to move this right here so I don't tip it over. All right. My name is Brian Durie. I'm a resident of the Apeken District, and if that map stretched just a little farther up, you would see my house right off the side of I-81. I grew up shooting. We have a natural backstop at our house. We know what to do, what not to do. Mr. Marston, you know that very well. He knows my dad. One of the things we were brought up knowing were Jeff Cooper's four rules of shooting. One, all guns are loaded. Two, never let the muzzle cover anything you don't wish to destroy. Three, always keep your finger off the trigger until prepared to fire. But more importantly, number four, be sure of your target and what lies on the other side of it. I'm seeing I-81. I'm seeing that there are houses out in the country off of Grim Road and everything. That's behind that. There's no guarantee, from what they have provided here, that there'd be any prevention of any hyperelevation of a rifle. In a discussion on Facebook, they informed me that there would be a barrier resisting that. I don't remember them discussing that, nor have I ever even seen a range that was equipped with that. I've been to the NRA range, which was an indoor range, and they don't have anything that prevents a hyperelevation. And as was stated earlier, it doesn't take that much elevation to get over that berm and to be endangering people across I-81 or on I-81. The ranges are not that long. A .223 effective range is 400 to 600 yards. That's effective. That's not maximum range of that bullet drift. If you pick up any box of .22 ammo, it says maximum range, three miles plus. Doesn't mean you're good at three miles. It means that that bullet could travel that far. And being that my house faces Stevens City, I was always told, keep the .22 down, or you're going to lose the privilege. But I don't doubt that we need a range in this area, but is this the right place for it? We're seeing a huge amount of growth in this county, and part of it's coming from Stevens City, part of it's coming from Middletown. We have 300 housing units coming right across the street from Lord Fairfax. Is this a good spot to have that growth? Because eventually, we're going to have to rezone that area and potentially move this facility. Plus, we have gun ranges at the Isaac Walton League, Gun Club, up at the Cove. For black powder shooters, they could go to the NSSA range. And for anyone trying to qualify on pistols, we have an indoor range off of 522 near the airport. An outdoor range in this area is not a good idea. I would strenuously urge you guys to reconsider this, and possibly even encourage an indoor shooting range somewhere in the county, but not an outdoor in this location. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir.
Burning Down Stixy Play Glass Company. Since 1968, we've run the business property up top the hill from... I don't pretend to be an expert in anything, but my family since 1963 has been running the grounds at Fort Shenandoah, NSSA. My grandmother's house, three miles away, as a child, I remember the windows rattling. Three miles away. Now, we're immediate up top the hill. We just wonder what compensation would be considered to those immediate landowners to the property for loss in value of real estate, loss in sanity. Now, Greenway's an incredible company. I fear they're competent. With enough money put into this project, they certainly could build a safe underground firing range, which seems to be rapid. I just wish that more thought would be given to free bullets traveling. I've heard a lot of complaints from my employees, people that would probably do business that they would feel very uncomfortable with. Sanity has a price to as well. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir.
Chairman Supervisors.
Your name, sir?
My name is Stuart Israel. I'm here from Winchester. I am the NRA's Virginia State Representative for Training Counselors. My job is to develop more in-depth curriculums for Training Counselors, Instructors, and Chief Range Safety Officers. I'm here tonight to speak more on the aspects of safety. Everyone else is more talking about the engineering and the volume. So I'm going to speak more to the SOP. I was approached by Travis and Ashley Dodson several months ago, and they were in the process of considering putting a range in Frederick County. process of considering putting a range in Frederick County. I was asked if I would be willing to create the range's standard operating procedures, which I believe you guys got in the... I was given then the layout of the property. They were considering what you see here. I, with another Training Counselor, Christopher Schneider, began to build and construct a range SOP. Countless hours were spent in the production, including a walkthrough of the property. We believe not only that does the SOP meet the NRA's safety standards, but exceeds it by far. I will conclude by saying, not only as an NRA representative, but as a husband and father of two, I'm in much support of this range. It's good to have a range where you can go, that the range is actually supervised by range safety officers. There's talk of the Isaac Walton. There's talk of all these places. These places are self-supervised. Having a range where people are watching over you and got your back and make sure you're following the safety rules is very important, especially in raising a family. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Corina Ness, and I live in the town of Stevens City. I am in my seventh year here as the Director of Religious Education for the Unitarian Universalist Church of the Shenandoah Valley. I am responsible for providing religious education, growth, and learning programs for all ages. I am deeply concerned about this proposal for a shooting range so close to our church as the noise pollution would be detrimental to the environment that we try to create. We offer many programs, including lectures, special events, counseling sessions, and many planning meetings. We hold monthly small group ministry gatherings, committee meetings from our committees, book discussions, growth opportunities for the spirit. We are a sanctuary for the soul and require a place of peace and safety so we can experience the divine and grow and heal on our spiritual journeys. We have a contemplation room at our church where people come to sit, meditate, and reflect. Our property includes walking paths, a memorial garden where our congregants and their families and friends come to remember their loved ones. Our children like to play outside and on our walking paths before and after our church services and during our special events and programs. Much of our church business takes place during the proposed hours stated, for we are a seven-day-a-week In any given week, we have anywhere from 10 to 20 programs, meetings, that would be affected by the sound pollution. As you can imagine, the programs we offer transform lives. The noise pollution would be detrimental to our staff, daily work schedules, our congregants, and the friends we serve. This would impede our personal spiritual journeys and the work we desire to accomplish in the larger world.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Bruce Bryant. I'm a member of the Unitarian Universalist Congregation and an attender of many of the activities that have been mentioned before. I have a brief technical comment on the measurement of sound levels that was presented earlier. Most sound meters are averaging. They do not report the peak noise that is occurring there. So, I would suggest that unless they have some very specialized equipment, they're not reporting the sound of gunshots, the peak sound that human ears hear. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is James Baker. I live in Middletown, Virginia. I just wanted to comment on a couple of things. As far as the tranquility of the area, totally understand. Over in Middletown, I have an old historic home right on Church Street. But with the tranquility comes, we have to the south of the proposed range, towering multiple power lines in an open field. We have Route 81. Tranquility, okay. I do want to touch on the effect on our community, our children. I'm sure all of you at some point have said that there's a breakdown of the family being, okay? This area we live in, Frederick County, Falkirk County, all this surrounding, historically this is a gun-friendly population, historically. You probably could not go into the high school. If you went into a high school or even a middle school, asked the children, "Do you hunt? Do you hunt with your parents?" Majority of them are going to say yes. These kids need a place to go to be able to be with their parents, understand safety, gain responsibility for others, for themselves. Just think of all that, what this implies. A lot of other things to consider. I understand everyone's input here, but that to me is really something to consider, to give these kids someplace to go besides sitting around playing their games inside the house, not doing what they're supposed to be doing, all of these things. I just ask that you give Middletown Firearms a chance to show you what they're proposing. I'm sure, I know there's many things they couldn't touch on, like there's many things I'd like to say, but I can't think of right now. Just don't shut them down. Give them a chance. And I'd ask everyone behind me to give them a chance too. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Mark Zamanovich. I own, I'm a resident of Middletown, and I own a dental practice about a half mile away on Salem Church Road. I strongly oppose this conditional use permit for the following four reasons. This falls, the safety protocol laid out by Mr. Dodson falls terribly short when dealing with handgun and rifles aimed at Interstate 81 within a half mile of my business, adjacent houses and churches. Clearly, the level of planning presented by Mr. Dodson was quite cavalier in light of the potential lethal effects an overshot bullet or ricochet could inflict by merely saying he will ensure proper containment with eight-foot berms on the sides and 16-foot berm on the end, which we've clearly established does not require much gun elevation. Secondly, the plan laid out in the application has very little information on the noise pollution potential and control plan to contain the noise of loud gunfire. Mr. Dodson clearly understands the noise pollution will be a problem by stating that the range will not operate during church hours. What about the other businesses, neighbors, and the public in general, the other six-and-a-half days a week? Mr. Dodson hopes to invite 1,000 shooters, potentially 29 at any single time, given the number of lanes proposed, to fire loud weapons with no plan for noise pollution control beyond the potential of additional buffers or foliage to block the noise. We are not convinced a few shrubs will contain the sound of 29 guns firing at once. Thirdly, the plan laid out in this application has no information on the potential economic impact on the area surrounding the shooting range. The future economic development potential of the Route 11 corridor between Stevens City and Middletown is great. Lord Fairfax, Middletown on the south and Stevens City on the north, which open tracts of land between, present an area ripe for possible future commercial and residential development. The presence of a loud and potentially dangerous shooting range in the middle of this area poses a significant long-term risk for economic development potential as this area of Frederick County looks to the future. A future business owner, land developer, or prospective resident would likely look at neighboring shooting range as a significant reason to not locate in the area. The potential loss of future tax revenue and community development greatly outweighs the minimal economic benefit this shooting range will bring to the area. And fourthly, Mr. Dodson explains that 1,000 potential shooters are unable to locate options for safe shooting and training. He fails to mention that 340 Defense is only 24 miles away in Berryville. It is a large, safe, established facility, providing even more shooting options than his proposed range. Mr. Dodson also fails to mention that Peacemaker National Training Center is only 34 miles away in Jaredstown, West Virginia. Peacemaker is the largest shooting sports complex on the East Coast. With much better options within a short drive for the greater Frederick County area, we cannot see how Mr. Dodson justifies the need for another shooting complex where proposed. I strongly oppose this for those four reasons. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Gloria Kelm. I am a resident of the Stonewall District of Frederick County. And more to the point of this meeting, a member of the Unitarian Universalist Church of the Shenandoah Valley. As with most other faith groups, our church is our sacred place. We gather together often to share that sacred space with others. Because this sacred space is so central to our spiritual lives, it is not just someplace we go on Sunday mornings. As Cory indicated, we gather many, many times for many activities during the week. As an illustration, this past Sunday, I was at the church at 9:00 in the morning, didn't leave till 1:30. In addition to our service, we had two events after the service that most of us didn't leave till 1:30 and some at 2:00. This is not unusual. You would be mistaken to think that we are a congregation that gathers only on Sunday morning for a few hours. We are active in many ways on many other days, and those activities are just as important to our spiritual lives as that two-hour period on Sunday morning. And I have to add, I came here very concerned about the noise and the disruption. I haven't heard anything so far this evening that's made me feel better about it. I thank you very much.
Thanks, ma'am. Next, yes, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name's Gil Christian. We own a historic property just across I-81. As of, as per Frederick County Code, Part 103, Conditional Use Permits, under 165-103.01, it states, quote, the, well, it says the county is supposed to, quote, "avoid adverse impacts on surrounding properties" when they are issuing cups. Section 165-103.02, standards, some of these have already been covered, but the one that wasn't was the conditional, this quote, "The conditional use shall not tend to change the character and established pattern of development of the area of the proposed use." I don't know how many of you on the board here would like to have a shooting range within 1,000, with 1,000 members close to your home where the gun goes on forever, seven days a week, but the noise will be overbearing and never-ending. Calling this noise a nuisance is nowhere near a strong enough description. Let's talk property values. Everybody already knows this. It's been said once or twice. Every vote for this gun range is basically a vote against the value of your own property. According to Frederick County Code, 122-1, definitions, the word nuisance is described as "that which annoys by its use, existence, or damage to others." It shall be unlawful for any person to cause or maintain a public nuisance. Safety issue, we are also concerned about stray rounds since this is an outdoor open range. There is no way that the applicant can guarantee against stray rounds fired from this range, and you've heard testimony from other people saying that they've worked at ranges and seen plenty of accidental issues. There are three sets of power lines as well as traffic on I-81 to be considered. The employees of the electric company will be at risk as well as the helicopter crews they use to inspect and repair the lines. Today, I spoke with the attorney for Potomac Edison, and they are looking into possible conflicts concerning the power lines. If this application is granted, it will be near impossible to revoke it at a later date. Any violations of the applicant at the location may be very costly for us as a community to litigate if we are not able to get the county to enforce the provisions of the board approval. Another thing is, if you open this photo up a little bit more here, you'd see a lot more buildings than they're reflecting on this. For me and most of the people I've spoke with, we don't want to hear 100 shots per day at 80 decibels, and we don't want to hear 1,000 at 20 decibels. We don't want to hear anything. The testing that has been done, a few things that I had to ask on that, is did they use two different meters for validation? Were they calibrated recently? Was there an opportunity or opposition or a fair partial person present? Are these results certified in any way? And let's see, I don't know about anybody else's guns, but every time I shoot one of mine, noise comes out the end of the barrel.
Thanks, sir. Next.
Hello, my name is Reverend Dr. Julie Kane, and I serve the Unitarian Universalist Church of the Shenandoah Valley across Route 11 from the proposed site. I'm here speaking on behalf of our entire congregation of over 150 women, men, and children and additionally 40 to 50 regular attending friends of our congregation's activities. I'm here also in part to represent the staff of the church and also our minister emeritus and his wife, longtime and active members of the church and the larger community, and our Board of Directors, many of whom are present here this evening. We are deeply concerned about the noise and safety hazards to our year-round, seven days a week, 52 weeks a year operation, Sunday services, memorials, weddings, religious education programming, and host many other community groups and their regular meetings. We also have 13 acres of hiking trails that we want to make available to the larger community and a permanent memorial garden where our loved ones, our memories are honored. We are upset about the multiple impacts on our congregation and the larger community that we serve, along with the impact on our residential neighbors, local schools, and other nearby churches, along with the motorists on I-81. I will be submitting documentation of our staff and many activities and a sample calendar of activities for November. We strongly recommend that another more suitable location is available in Frederick County for this kind of business so as not to have any adverse impacts on their neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, yes, sir.
I'm glad I'm not up there. My name is David Lipkin. I live in Winchester. I've lived here three years, moved from New Hampshire down here, and I'm a hobby shooter. I like to shoot handguns. And for the first two years of moving here, I traveled to Manassas. I looked at every gun range currently within a reasonable area of my home, and I wasn't satisfied with any of them for a number of reasons, and I chose to travel 70 miles each way to shoot twice a week. Now I'm 70 years old, and I decided that's too far to travel, and I started getting tired on the way home. And I've been looking for another place to shoot. I do shoot, I live in a rural area similar to this, out 50 west, almost to Gore. And as a rural area, I'm allowed to shoot in my backyard, as are about eight of my neighbors who do the same thing every Sunday. And it's okay, but it's not as much, it's not enjoyable. There's not as much camaraderie when you go to a range with some, you know, some shooters that enjoy the same thing you do. So, I am very much in favor of this, and as a resident of Frederick County, I know you have to consider everybody's needs in this matter, and, which is why I wouldn't want to be in your shoes, as I said. And I certainly hope that you know the quality of the Middletown firearm people that I've come to know, and I believe firmly that between you, them, and engineers, you can come up with a facility on these grounds. I've seen shooting facilities on much smaller pieces of property that can satisfy the needs of everybody in the county. So, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thanks, sir. Next.
Good evening. I'm Dr. David W. Powers. I've been with Valley Health for 34 years. I'm also an occupational health physician at Mount Weather. I was stunned with what Evan Wyatt told us about 80 decibels. I had planned to come talk to you all about living at Christmas Springs. It is my family homestead. The Lumpkins are my cousins. I own land. I'm in Gainesboro District, but I own approximately half of Christmas Springs. The history in this area is unbelievable. This area was settled in 1751 by Yoast Height's son-in-law. It's chosen land. The springs that no one's mentioned, the springs that are right next to the shooting range are where the Methodist Church got its start in 1806. Nothing's been said about contamination of the water supply in this area. There's been no environmental impact study. There's been no evaluation of lead abatement. I actually run a hearing conservation program for FEMA. 80 decibels is a freight train 100 feet away. I'm going to say that again. 80 decibels is a freight train 100 feet away. At 85 decibels, chronic exposure at 85 decibels requires a hearing conservation program by the federal government. This noise impact to this quiet rural historic area, and our Historic Resources Board has already weighed in to say that, you know, this is a terrible idea. So, I simply say, vote no against this proposal. So I simply say, vote no against this proposal. The reasons are, it's against Frederick County's long-term plan. It's also against common sense. You all have mentioned shooting rifles toward 81. I'm an emergency physician. How many bullets have I dug out of people or pronounced them dead? Shooting bullets toward 81, I don't care what safety you have, is not appropriate. Please, please reject this program outright for all the reasons that you've been given tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Yes.
My name's Todd Lumm. I live at 6281 Valley Pike. Yes, I'm totally against the proposed shooting range. Yes, it would certainly diminish the historical integrity of our home, Indian Springs, one of the oldest homes in the county. But it would also certainly diminish the quality of life that I have enjoyed for 47 years, a wonderful life. Yes, I have many concerns about safety. Making hay adjacent to a shooting range with the possibility of a ricocheting bullet certainly detracts from my farming operation. And yes, the horrendous noise, seven days a week, affecting not only our family, but livestock, pets, and all of our neighbors. After receiving the county's letter, I had questions for Mr. Travis Dotson, the owner. I said I would not want this in my backyard. Would he? He said no. Ladies and gentlemen, please let's say no. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next.
Evening, Mr. Chairman.
My reasons for speaking are...
Name and district?
My name is Ronan James. I live on Ridings Mill Road, directly behind this property.
Okay.
My reasons are completely personal. I don't want to be downrange from a shooting range, an open-air range, and I was out in my yard last weekend when they were conducting their noise tests, and let me tell you, it was disturbing. You know, I could hear them clearly. We get neighbors shooting on their property and out in their yards on a Sunday, on a Saturday, during the weekends, and it's not as much of a problem, but when there's a concentration from open to close of all of these people continually shooting, it's going to be like we're living in Beirut. I've owned a house there for 10 years, okay? That wasn't part of my vision when I bought my property, and I don't appreciate what they're trying to do with the effect to everybody's property values in the area. I mean, I can't afford to take a hit on my house like that. You know, that's basically all I've got for you, sir.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next.
Hello. My name is Demarche Spears, Back Creek District. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak on this topic. I am an owner of the Trumpet Vine Farm Event Facility, which is about a half a mile from this proposed range. I'm here to express concerns and opposition to this application. I have been running a professional venue since 2012. I host a lot of weddings and events. Most events held at Trumpet Vine Farm are Saturdays during daylight hours. Imagine having to explain to a potential client during a site visit that there's no guarantee that that noise will cease prior to their nuptials. Who would want to book our location at that point? Not me nor anyone else. Please, people book my venue because it's isolated, quiet farm feel. I have no doubt this will substantially impact my business. The business provides the financial stability needed as a single owner of a working farm that I have worked my whole life on. This will also have a ripple effect on vendors that I use, such as rental companies, caterers, photographers. Additionally, with the housing developments that are on both north and south of this site, I question the value of our land being depreciated. I hope that you guys, as planners and developers of the county, you know, hear what we're saying. This area you are considering for this type of business is too populated and has too many activities, and all-day daily shooting range should be out away from population in other facilities. I'm not against this business, just the location. I also have a lot of animals and fear this will be unnerving to them, which can cause accidents and someone to get hurt. Lastly, the sanitation satellite area, the Middletown School everyone's talked about. Imagine taking your trash and hoping a novice gun owner doesn't have an accident. Their children will be outside during gym, recess, and other activities and have to hear this daily. The game fields at Lord Fairfax host a lot of games in the summer. That's all summer long, shooting, shooting, shooting. I can't believe anybody, you know, that knows anything about guns would even try to squeeze something like this in to an area between 81 and 11 like that. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next.
My name is Michelle Boils. I'm part of the Gainesboro District. I come to you with no statistics. I don't have any codes. I am a mom of two teenagers, and there is nothing in the community for them to do if they are avid sportsmen's. I'm fortunate enough that my children do have the amount of land that they can practice on. They go to school with multiple children that have this interest and are unable to have a place to do it at, or to have someone that knows what they're doing, to show them, to teach responsible gun owners, and that's important. I know that there is lots of mention of the church and the tranquility. I understand that some people's idea of tranquility is silence. Mine happens to be gunfire. When I hear gunfire, I know that it's, I'm safe. So, to each their own, and I think for the children in the community, for avid people that are interested in this, it's a good opportunity. I think Mr. Dotson's done a decent job at trying to take everyone's ideas and thoughts into consideration. I think he will continue to do so with what he leaves from here tonight with everybody. I think he will take all of that into consideration and try to bring a better proposal if need be, but I hope that he's given the opportunity to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
Hi, I'm Dr. Christabel Sweeney. I live in the Back Creek District. I'm a property and business owner less than half a mile from this location. I strongly oppose this for the detrimental effects on the future economy, the local businesses, the neighbors of this. I think it's a serious noise pollution issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, I'm Nathan Hankins. I live in Stralsburg. I've heard a lot of people say noise pollution is going to be this great deal about it. I build race car engines for a living, so I'm around 130 decibel-plus engines all day long. They took those decibel readings in an open field with nothing around but natural resources to help mitigate sound. You dig down in the dirt, then put eight-foot berms on it and a 16-foot berm at the back, and you shoot down into that berm, the noise is going to be reflected inside of it. It's not going to go out and about and make all types of racket for everybody else. And then you add the natural landscape also will help seriously mitigate it. If they put any type of baffling system up to reduce noise, you're not going to hear it. You're not going to hear it a half mile away. And then you also have people talking it's going to hurt businesses. I don't agree with that. I think if they're saying that they're going to have 1,000 members, but it's also going to be open to the public non-members, that's 1,000 people coming in that area, going to other businesses while they're waiting to go to the range. And then all the other people, all surrounding counties that don't have a shooting range to go to are going to be coming in this area, spending their money here. I think it will provide a serious benefit to this county.
Okay. That is...
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Next.
Commissioners, Stephen Chadwell, Back Creek. I'm opposed to this. It's 33 acres for the gun range. I don't think it's anywhere near adequate if anybody's ever been to a firing range before. I mean, and this is an area where folks, well, my family's been there since 1953, and I've bought other properties there. I mean, you have two facilities there for lodging. You got across the street, you got the electric substation there, and it's just a 33-acre thing when working. You're close to four churches and a seven-day-a-week firing. Just imagine that. This is not your mom and pop where Mr. is teaching his wife to shoot, or she's teaching him how to shoot once a year. This is a continuous thing, and I believe it, you know, this, a facility like this is needed somewhere, but 33 acres is not going to do it in that spot. I mean, it needs to be secluded. You need immense woodland to cut the noise value down, and you need an area where there's little opposition to it. And I realize safety is the biggest thing, but it's just, it's going to knock the hell out of any property value there, or anybody has a potential to want to buy something and build there, and there's no engineer that can make it work, the way I see it. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next.
My name is Joe Powers. I live in Blacksburg, Virginia, but along with my brother David, we are property owners of the land on the other side of 81, immediately across from the proposed shooting range. I'm a retired planner, so where did I send you all? I sent you a map to show where everybody is close around this proposal, but probably you don't need the map because you can look out in the audience here, and you can see who's close to the proposed shooting range. And then the other thing I did is I sent you five pages on the comprehensive plan. You can tell I'm a planner, but we're not going to read those to you tonight. I just want to point out two quick things. The large scale of this development with up to 1,000 members, and we talked about how many people could be there at any one time, the time they're going to be busiest is on weekends and on holidays. And when are the residents home from work and wanting to be out in their yards, their gardens, enjoying their lives? It's going to be on holidays and weekends. The other thing I wanted to point out from the comprehensive plan is in the section on agriculture, you say you want to encourage agriculturally-related activities. However, care must be taken to ensure that these activities are compatible in scale, size, and intensity with surrounding land uses and rural character. If you're going to require agriculture activities to be compatible, then you certainly need to require that commercial uses that are coming into the rural areas be compatible as well, and I do not believe the scale of this proposed shooting range is compatible with the surrounding uses, the surrounding land uses and the rural character of the area. And the last thing I didn't come to speak about, but I think I need to say, is about the decibel readings. I don't know a whole lot about this, but I've been starting to look into it, and one of the things I've learned is, for firearms, it's called what is called impulse sound because they're sharp, short, and unexpected, and there are problems with impulse sound in getting readings because it's so short, it's hard to get accurate readings, and as one of the persons said earlier, it takes higher equipment. And also, you need to compensate for the fact that it's so unexpected. You might have the hum of a car to a certain decibel level, and you get the crack of that bullet at that same decibel level. You, as an individual, perceive that differently. It's, it makes a difference, and lots of professionals that work in the sound business have to accommodate for that, to see what is the perceived decibel level. So I second what was said earlier. Do your own research. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Next.
My name is John Sirmack, and I'm from Warren County. Thank you for letting me speak. I'll be quick. I have no expert opinion on anything. I do come to the Unitarian Universalist Church for meditation. I've found its walking trails, its area well, and speaking economically, I'm not a big buckler. I live on a minimum income. However, I do use Granny's, and I do use the restaurants in the town, and I take my car to Classic Auto for repairs, and I never would have even come to Stevens City if it wasn't for the Unitarian Church and the fact they offer meditation, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next.
Yes, sir. Martin Downey, I'm a landowner in the Back Creek District. I'd like to say good evening to Chairman Kenny, Vice Thomas, and the Commissioners. I'm a landowner on the property which is south of the proposed site at the shooting range, as noted south on here, the tar line. The issue is here, as clearly I am also a life member of the NRA, and I'm actually a federal firearms dealer. I clearly understand what is at stake here. My wife and I are here tonight to staunch, bestonk opposition to the proposed conditional use permit and request that you vote no. The existence of a commercial range at this location will fundamentally change the quality of life, the rural character, and the historic integrity of our community. We farm the property and enjoy numerous activities as seen here to the right. An open-air shooting range at this site would clearly threaten our farming practices and enjoyment of the property, and condemn the use of large tracts of that land. You've been offered a lot of information tonight, but here are the facts. I'm going to reiterate some. First, the noise levels will be unprecedented in volume and magnitude. Despite claims made to the contrary, and without question, the noise from the proposed open-air range is going to affect citizens for miles. Noise is a negative byproduct of any outdoor shooting facility, which is a plaguing issue for all ranges throughout the United States and our own home, Virginia. Second, this is a high-risk safety issue for the community due to the range of all firearms that will be used here. This is a small parcel of property and is simply not the right location. The applicant has recently moved the location of the range within the parcel due to non-compliance with required setback distances to existing structured roadways and property lines. They have now identified a postage-size stamped area squeezed along the southern property line with shooting ranges directly pointing at 81, as discussed. The exposure to the ricocheting, skipping, and errant bolts from an open range is real, and it puts us all at risk in the community. Third, the community needs to be prepared for plunging property values. It is widely recognized the negative ramifications and the impact of living near an outdoor shooting range. Noise, safety, environmental, and yes, there's tons of toxic lead that will be put in the system here will drive down values. For example, Realtor.com lists commercial shooting ranges along with trash dumps and nuclear power plants as the worst places to live adjacent to. The large properties boarding to the north and south of the proposed range have been in our families for over 200 years. On prime real estate, we have conscientiously chosen to protect and preserve these properties through generations. The proposed range exploits the integrity of our preservation and conservation efforts, so we respectfully are asking the Commission does not recommend the conditional use permit before you. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Kyle McNeely. I live in Stevens City. I lived in just a few miles from the proposed site for about 22 years with my family, who still lives there. I, I plan on moving back in the, at some point and buying land, and I, and I would like to, and I think personally, I think Middletown Firearms, between that and Nana's pub, is pretty much the only reason I go back, that and my family, of course, but...
That's a good thing to say at this point.
Sure, sure. Yeah, anyways, so I, I don't have any prepared numbers for you, but I do know the men and women that work at Middletown Firearms. I've come to, I've come to know them. I work closely with one of the Dodsons, and they've, I just want to say they've committed their, their lives and careers to serving people and helping people and serving the public, and I, I'm, I know for a fact that if there was any, any risk, if they saw any risk to anyone, they, they would not go through with this, and that's why I'm behind them 100%. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next.
My name is Roger Ramey. I'm a Back Creek District. I wanted to come at it from a little bit different perspective, from the historical perspective, but in favor of it, basically saying Frederick County saw a lot of action in the Civil War, Revolutionary War, and a lot of homesteads here, back into the 1700s, even before that Native Americans. It's safe to say there's not an acre of land from the back road east that hasn't been touched by a Civil War soldier at one point during the war, but I want to bring up three and... Um, but I want to bring up three instances in which Frederick County has failed to preserve that, um, and why this doesn't really play any impact into this, the history of the land. First is Rutherford's Crossing, Stevenson's Depot. The entire battlefield was effectively wiped off the face of the map by pavement and by buildings, by, you know, any type of commercial structures. It's gone. The, um, the recent home development in Middletown, that is one of the key parts of the Battle of Cedar Creek, October 19th, 1864. We're about to commemorate that through reenactment next weekend. Um, that has been completely wiped off the map forever with no opposition from the National Park Service, no opposition from Frederick County, no opposition, period. But that is a very core, central area of the battlefield. Um, this property right here, while I certainly probably did see some sort of history or action on it, it is very insignificant. Um, another point, I'm a big Civil War guy, in case you couldn't tell. So with the reenactment coming up, just to put in perspective, um, how loud it's going to be and the amount of people shooting, there's over 1,000 registered participants there. And if you put a musket in each one of their hands, you still can't hear it any further than two miles away. Now, the artillery is a different story. The artillery, these things are three-inch bore, a 50 caliber, which would not be permitted at the range, that is a half of an inch. These artillery pieces are three-inch bore or larger, and they're going to be firing at full load. They're shooting blanks, of course, but the report, they're going for maximum report. That's, that's part of the show. So with that maximum report, you're still not going to hear that anywhere outside of five miles. And that's artillery, and there's not going to be any artillery on this range. Um, but just to say, it, it may seem very loud up close, but it's, it's really not. Um, it's something I would recommend y'all. I think you already have most of your minds made up. I wanted to listen to everyone here before I said anything, just to kind of see everyone's opinion on it. And, um, I'm personally in favor of it, but, uh, I'd like y'all just to vote how you feel. And, uh, I'm glad y'all had us out here and sort of keeping you so late.
That's all right. Thank you. So we're here for them. Next.
I'm Jason McDonald from Back Creek District. Um, third generation farmer. We're, I actually live about four tenths of a mile down Volclues Road. Um, on our, on our, our farming operation, we run a horse boarding operation. Uh, we, we keep about 60 horses. Um, although I see a need for this, for this business, for an establishment like this, um, the noise level would be, would be devastating to our business. Um, if, you know, we lose our clientele, you know, we're, we're, you know, we're, we're losing out on our income. So, and there's other businesses, you know, in the area that are in the same, same situation. There's not a lot, not a lot that I can say here anymore than what's already been said tonight. So I'm going to cut it short and just wanted to let you know it, it would have a considerable impact on our business.
Thanks, sir. Next. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Dr. Kais. I'm a resident of Back Creek, and I live on Salem Church Road. I live on Salem Church Road.
Thank you.
I'm very opposed to this plan for a number of reasons, most, all of which I've kind of gone over. The economic impact, concerned about my property values, the environmental impacts of lead, the safety, the safety issues that I don't think have been adequately addressed, and then the noise impact. Um, I do keep my horse at Dunyan and Jason's stable. Um, and having a shooting range of this size that close to any of those is just, seems to be totally not in line with the tranquility and the, and the environment that we have established in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
My name is Bruce White. I too am a member of the Unitarian Universalist Church of the Shenandoah Valley. I speak about the noise level from a slightly different perspective than what you've already heard this evening. I'm a retired elementary school teacher. I was teaching on 9/11. I witnessed the psychological trauma that our children in my school experienced then. And a few years later, when news of mass shootings caused our school district to teach the children how to duck and cover and shelter in place. My fear is that the noise level of this shooting, uh, range could have a similar effect on the children at our church and at the, on the children of the nearby elementary school. There's a flip side to that argument, though. One might say, oh, you'll get used to it. Quite frankly, ladies and gentlemen, I don't think it's appropriate for children to get used to the noise of shooting because then if there were a shooting event of serious consequence, they would be inured to the noise and not as responsive as they need to be. For those reasons, I am very much opposed to the location of this, uh, shooting range. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next. Yes, sir.
Dave Fletcher, Opeckin District. Okay. Um, I just wanted to say I'm very opposed to this, and I, I don't want to keep beating a dead horse, but I know the noise thing keeps on coming up. I am concerned about that as well. They were talking about the reenactment. The reenactment is one day or one weekend a year. This thing is going to be constant, seven days a week. And they say you can't hear it. That's baloney. You hear it all the time, all the time. And you were, at one time it was mentioned about putting up sound barriers early in the, in the evening to the, uh, north and to the south. Guess where I'm at? I'm to the east. So I've got a piece of property that may come up for sale, but please come by. If you pass this, come by before this thing goes in because the value's going to be going down.
Thanks, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Karen Downey. I'm in Back Creek District. I live at 6486 Valley Pike, right across the road from this proposed site. And I'm just very concerned about the threatening intrusion and the quality of my life in this, with this proposed permit for commercial shooting range of the property across the road. Um, I have the power company and the CSH Railroad right behind me, and they all make a lot of noise on the backside. So now I'm going to have something with this proposed range on the front side. Okay? And I vehemently against it. And I just wonder how anyone can ever consider having the range between two heavily traveled roads, 11 and 81. And no matter how many safety rules that are stated, the risk of harm, you can never, um, guarantee those safeties. And it says, how can I ever enjoy my own yard, my gardening, my mowing, my cutting brush, fixing fence, or just walking down to the road for my mail or newspaper without fear of any ricocheting bullets or anything like that? And the noise level, the persistent shooting level, the noise level would be like living in a war zone and would attract anybody within one to two mile radius and make my property value plunge. Is this the environment that you would want for your family, friends, or neighbors? Um, we've talked environmentally. I don't know that there's environmental impacts been done, but these leads from the spent bullets could leach into the nearby wells, streams, and springs and supply water for homes, livestock, and wildlife. And do we really want this commercial toxic pollution to destroy our rural and agricultural way of life? My late husband was a Virginia State trooper and an avid hunter, and we built that home in 1977 with the intention of joining the sovereignty of this historic community. Even he would be devastated of having this shooting range within 1,000 feet from our front door. And it's not like there aren't any other ranges. And I understand people's concerns about people's wanting to learn about shooting and things like that. And I have all the respect for them, but this is not the appropriate place. I spoke with someone from Echo Valley Training Center, and he, the first question he asked me was how many acres this is. And I told him it was 35, and I've seen tonight it's 34. And he said that is absolutely ludicrous to think of having a shooting range in that amount of, of land. He owns his land and his range is up to 325 acres. And it's backed up against mountains and it's very out in the rural community. And he also says that even with all these berms, it's no guarantee that these bullets will not go through those berms. So I would encourage you to please vote against this commission, conditional use of permit for the Middletown Firearms. And I'm right across the road, and I don't want to have to listen to it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. Um, I appreciate that. Um, my name is Dr. Daniel Downey. I am from Harrisonburg, Virginia. Um, but I'm co-owner of that property just south, all the property south with my brother, who's already spoken tonight, that linear line that goes right across there. Everything south of that is our property. And I brought a visual aid with, with me because I am, for 34 years, a professor of chemistry at James Madison University. Uh, these are sound dampening headphones. Uh, every person who shoots at a range has to wear these. And that is, in its own, an admission of the fact that gunfire creates nasty sound. Um, I'm here to respectfully request that you all vote no, flat out no, on this, uh, conditional use permit. Our property is precious to us and been in our families, my brother pointed out, for a couple hundred years. I am opposed to the project, uh, which would be immediately adjacent to our land for the following reasons. Uh, we have been informed that no buildings, we have been informed that no buildings may be built within 1,000 feet. Now, you have 1,000-foot setback already for existing buildings, but we have been informed we cannot build within 1,000 feet of the, um, site if it is actually constructed. And that means that all the value for any future use that we might have here is taken from us. This is a taking indirectly, but it's a taking. Um, we, um, have not ever built on this land, and we were told that if we had built on this land, that we probably would have been able to prevent this from even being considered. I said, so we're being penalized for the fact that we haven't developed this historic agricultural land? Think about that. Okay? Um, in addition to the noise that you've already heard a great deal about, um, we want to point out that it's not just the magnitude of the noise, it's the repetitive nature of that noise that's problematic. I looked at this, and this first I saw of it was tonight, this research that they did on four sites adjacent to the shooting range. And as a researcher, for the last 40 years, I chuckled. I said, this isn't research. I said, sound travels in air in a variety of ways, having to do with air temperature, air pressure, wind direction, humidity levels, and time of day and temperature. There's other factors that control. So if you're going to do a study, do the study right. In addition to that, notice that there's no number five on there. Our property is 100 feet from this, 100 feet from this, and there's no number five right there. Okay? Um, the repetitive sound is an issue which other people have addressed here. Uh, we've also had several people address the standards, uh, the standards such as shall not adversely affect the use and enjoyment of the property. So we encourage you respectfully request you vote no. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. And I'm so glad you put headphones out of that bag. Anyone else? This is a public hearing. Anyone else would like to come before us and speak? Got about three seconds. Seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing. Questions, commissioners for the applicant or any of the staff? We had a lot of, if we kept notes, we had a lot of people speak. We had a lot of good information. And I know that there's always some rebuttal time that we need to have. And if Mr. White and his applicant would like to come forward, we can ask them questions. Now's the time to do so. So if they would please come from somewhere, there was one of them. I'll give you some time to respond to some of the information that we've been presenting tonight.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, we, we appreciate the comments regarding the application, uh, on both sides of the issue. As I told you, when we, when we were getting ready to sit down, uh, we were interested in hearing the input, just like you. Um, the, um, I think for the most part, uh, the, the comments are generally geared around location of site, noise, and, and, and general impacts. Um, when we were presenting to the commission, uh, I think some concerns we heard from this panel are, were wanting to have a better understanding of how the facility would lay out specific to the land and, uh, also better information on design of the facility for best sound attenuation. Um, and those are the takeaways I took from the discussion. Um, we would certainly, and I, I appreciated also that everybody that commented, I was respectful for both sides of the, of the issue, regardless of people's opinions. Uh, so all that is very much appreciated. Uh, one comment that was made was about they, they knew about the Dodsons' character and their willingness to take thoughts into consideration. And I know by some of the correspondence you all received, particularly from the local law enforcement, Middletown Town Council that, that speaks to the character of Travis and Ashley, the business they run, and what they want to do with this property. Um, obviously, that, that's a good credential. Um, I think probably the best way to approach this at this point in time, uh, we would be willing to go ahead and do, uh, some of the things we heard this evening as far as maybe a grading layout, study of the property to give you better information on how that would function, relationship between the, the range, the berm, 81 elevation, that sort of thing. Um, and then also provide you with better, uh, information for structural design, uh, for noise attenuation. Because where, where I think this would ultimately go is a conditional use permit, uh, those would be conditions that you would expect to be placed on an approved CUP to protect, uh, the residents in the area, but also to protect the investment that the applicant is willing to make. And, uh, we would be willing to do that, uh, with a 60-day tabling. Uh, but if there's other items that the planning commission would like to have thought through or, or more information, uh, we would like to hear that as well.
Okay. Anyone would like to comment to the applicant?
I think with the response that we had from the public, it would be a very good idea to table it, get the problems resolved, or try to get them laid down to where they're not going to be problems for people. I think that would be very smart and give them 60 days to do so.
Okay, let's, I understand that. Uh, it's not a motion yet, but Mr. Oates has some comments?
Oh, yeah. During the 60 days, I'd like you to take a look, consider putting buildings around the shooting range. Uh, I was just doing some quick sketches. It looks like a 40-by-80 building, uh, would take care of two of your ranges, a 50-by-100. So if you got it enclosed, that would cut down the noise quite a bit. Uh, I think a lot of problems that the neighbors are looking at is, is the outdoor component of this and the noise that's going to be generated.
I think we should go further than that, though. Uh, I appreciate the fact that some of the people was afraid of 81, which I do too, is tack that to where it won't be a problem. And maybe we can do that, too.
Okay.
There was comments made to be evident by a few people that they would highly consider an enclosed range over an open range.
Thank you, Mr. Marston. Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of options. Uh, I've been involved with probably well over 50 firing ranges, designing, construction, all for the military. And there, there's, many of them were open, many of them were closed. But there's, there's different ways, even without having a completely closed range, you can put baffles over the targets that would, uh, keep any ricochets from going outside of the immediate area. Same thing with the firing areas. Now, yeah, if somebody walks in there and wants to shoot straight up in the air and does it, you know, that, that can happen. But one of the things that we have to keep in mind is that, as the sheriff pointed out in his letter of endorsement, right now, somebody can go out and, the owner of that property can take 10 of his friends out there and shoot completely unsupervised. And I think emphasis on your, how your, your training, uh, plan, how you're going to supervise the shooting would, uh, you know, provide a lot of, uh, that'd be good feelings for the, for the community. Uh, you know, and in giving more information on when you did the testing, I found it interesting that only one person even knew you did the testing that one day. Uh, you know, everybody else that spoke, no one complained about it. So, uh, I'm not sure they heard it. But if you could do more testing for decibel levels around, around the property and even go off the property, if you could work with some of the... the property, if you could work with some of the neighbors who were concerned, go to their houses, if they will let you, meters and check there to see what the decibel ratings are. But there's a lot of options for design for safety and sound attenuation.
Yeah, I would just add, I think that the bottom line with a lot of this is that
there's a lot of information that's needed before, I think, the Planning Commission, or at least, I shouldn't speak for everybody, for myself, is that I'm in a position to make a recommendation to the board on this. And so I think we need this information so that we're in a position to make an informed recommendation. One thing I would say, you know, along the lines of the sound testing, if it's, I'm a little skeptical if it's just going around and, you know, taking tests and we don't really know what the meter is you're using, any of those types of things. So to me, for that testing to have some integrity, you know, you need to look into, you know, probably getting somebody else involved, you know, with it, just so that, again, there's some integrity to that data. I know that'll be important to me. I think this is a tough site in a lot of ways. It's a small site, and it's around a lot of things that are important to people, you know. So, you know, a lot of times remoteness is helpful when you're talking about a shooting range, you know, and so I think you're going to have to go above and beyond in providing detail to us to show us how this could work. And in my mind, that's kind of what everybody else has been touching on in terms of the facility design, which may be a little bit more than what you were planning on doing at a stage of the game, but I think it's important.
Thank you, Mr. Moan. Anyone else? Anyone else? Chair, I think there's a lot of the comments that's made. I think that some work needs to be done. Some good, earnest, hard work, a lot of concern, citizens, as is myself. So I anticipate you coming back with a lot more details and a lot more thoroughness to any testing you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we would table this for 60 days, conditional use permit number 7-19 for Middletown Firearms.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Moan?
Moan, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Trumpet, yes.
Marston, yes.
Bowden, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Oates, yes.
Klein, yes.
Manier, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Marshton, yes.
Unger, yes.
Chair of Oates, yes. It is postponed for 60 days, and we'll come back with more information. And I'd like to thank everyone for speaking tonight and everyone being civil. We all live in one community. We did a good job. Thank you. Let's take a break. Why don't we take a break, go to the bathroom? I'd like, hey, Mike, everybody's leaving, a couple-minute break. Let's take a break, folks. Use the restroom.
... And site plan review and approval for only utility-scale solar power generating facilities. You all will recall this came before you for discussion back in September. The intent of this text amendment is to codify a determination that utility-scale solar power generating facilities would be considered a public utility and to codify recent changes to the Code of Virginia to include the decommissioning of solar energy facilities. The text amendment also cleans up the terminology for public utilities throughout the various use sections of the zoning ordinance. And this text amendment does not amend requirements for other types of public utilities, including those facilities owned and operated by Frederick Water. The Development Review and Regulations Committee, or DRRC, discussed this item on June 27th, July 25th, and August 22nd, and they supported the proposed changes. Again, this item was discussed by the Planning Commission on September 4th and the Board of Supervisors on September the 25th, and the board requested those additional definitions that were noted earlier in the presentation. Following a public hearing this evening, staff is seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission to forward to the Board of Supervisors on this ordinance amendment, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have specific to this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Any questions? Mr. Klein? None? Thank you, sir. We have no applicant. We just heard from that. Is there no questions? I'll open a public hearing. Does anyone like to come forward and speak to us on this issue tonight?
I'll send it to the board.
Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll take, entertain a motion.
I recommend a motion that we send it on to the board like this.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And he's so anxious to vote, I'll let him go first, Mr. Unger.
Yes.
Marshton, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Manier, yes.
Klein, yes.
Oates, yes.
Thomas, yes.
Bowden, yes.
Marston, yes.
Trumpet, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Moan, yes.
And Chair votes, yes. That's one. Mr. Klein, we have, the next one is also a public hearing item. It's an ordinance amendment to the Frederick County Code, 165. Mr. Klein?
This is also an ordinance amendment, public hearing, request for conditional uses in the RA Rural Area Zoning District. The purpose of this proposed amendment is to add clarity to specific uses where the intensity of a given use is important in considering its appropriateness for a conditional use permit and to provide consistency in the allowance and implementation of certain uses. The Board of Supervisors directed the Planning Commission to evaluate the conditional use permit process and those listed use, conditional uses, to ensure that the uses and the scale of the uses were appropriate for the zoning district for which they were allowed. The proposed amendment to Chapter 165 of the zoning ordinance further defines the conditional use country general store to exclude all fuel sales and cap the square footage allowed at 3,500 square feet. It also provides additional regulations for specific uses, i.e. the country general store, and it eliminates, combines, and refines certain conditional uses. It also codifies recent zoning determinations related to home occupations, cottage occupations, and kennels to reduce the number of conditional use permit applications received. Again, the Development Review and Regulations Committee discussed this item on August 22nd, and the DRC was supportive of those proposed changes. This item was discussed by the Planning Commission on September the 4th and the Board of Supervisors on the 25th, and they offered no additional comments. Following a public hearing, staff is seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission to forward to the Board of Supervisors on this ordinance amendment, and of course, staff is happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Any questions on Mr. Klein? Seeing no one?
Just, oh, one quick one. I noticed that we've moved taxidermists up to the permitted uses, but it still shows up under conditional use as well.
We can verify that that is indeed, the intent was to remove that from the conditional use list and move it to the allowed use list, so we will make sure that that is clear if the item is recommended to go forward.
Thank you. Yeah, just didn't get struck, or stricken in the, uh...
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Oates. Good catch. No other questions?
I'd like to send this one up to...
What's a public hearing? Public hearing? I know you want to go home. This time, I'll open a public hearing. Anyone wants to come before us to speak? Now's the time to rush up and let us know about this ordinance amendment. Seeing no one, we're going to close the public hearing. And now, since Mr. Unger needs to go see a ballgame, I'll entertain a motion. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to send this to the Board of Supervisors, the way it's written.
Second.
Second.
And I got a second. So, Mr. Unger?
Unger, yes.
Marshton, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Manier, yes.
Klein, yes.
Oates, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Bowden, yes.
Marston, yes.
Trumpet, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Moan, yes.
And Chair votes, yes. This will go to the Board of Supervisors on October 13th, as was our last item. It goes on the October 13th also. Get to the point, any other? Other, we have date of our next meeting is November 6th.
Election Day.
Oh, I said October 13th. I'm sorry. It goes to November 13th. It goes to the Board of Supervisors. Excuse me. Excuse me, I'm sorry. And our next meeting is on November 6th.
That's correct.
Okay, we have an agenda that night. And if nothing else, come before us.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just point out one thing, that the county's transportation forum is going to be on October the 28th, here in this bill, excuse me, here in this room. So I'd encourage anybody that is able to attend to participate in the transportation forum, a nice annual event.
What time it, what time is that?
6 o'clock.
6 o'clock. Thank you.
We'll get a notice, won't we? That's correct, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Ruddy. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
[inaudible].